All right, everybody got your phones on silent? Are we ready to go? All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you in this season where we celebrate you. We, we thank you so much for the way that you blessed Marshall County this year and this month for your, your guidance and wisdom and protection. I pray as we move into 2025 that for the members here that will remain and for our new members incoming, that you will continue to give them strength and wisdom and courage, that your presence would be with us. We thank you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this regular business meeting of the Marshall County Council for December 12th, 2024 will come to order. Just as an alert to the public, we will be considering a consent agenda later in the meeting, which contains the additional appropriations and transfers of appropriations. Copies of the consent agenda are included at the back of the room on the back table there, and please feel free to review those. We'll begin the meeting with public input on agenda items. So if any members of the public have input on items that are on the agenda, you are most welcome. And hearing none, we'll move on to the US 30 West Propel presentation from Scott Stanstrom. Yeah, welcome, if you could, for the folks at home, just give your name and title there for the record.
Yeah, Scott Stanstrom with CDM Smith. I'm the project manager for the US 30 West Propel study.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for allowing us to come present today about the Propel US 30 West study. My name is Scott Stanstrom. Like I said, I'm with CDM Smith. We're working with NDOT on this Propel US 30 West study. And today, I'm just going to run through where we're at with the alternatives analysis, particularly the Level 3. So as a refresher, the Propel studies as a whole cover approximately 180 miles along US 30 and US 31. There's four separate studies, and today we're talking about the US 30 West study, which begins at State Road 49 on US 30 in Porter County and ends just west of Beach Road in Marshall County, and then goes south as well to Kenner Road 700 North in Fulton County. As part of the process, our study team has been engaging the public and study stakeholders for more than two years, and feedback received has been and continues to be a vital part of the success of the study, and it will help inform the next 20-plus years of transportation investments in the corridor. We don't anticipate that the PEL studies will identify or recommend a single build alternative. The studies create a reasonable set of alternatives that could move forward as part of NDOT's regular call for projects, which is typically a five-year timeline. I'm going to jump through a couple of them. We updated the presentations since the commissioners. The schedule, as you can see here, we started back in 2022. And now we're here at the Level 3 analysis and end of 2024. We aim to finish up the study early next year. Just the quick rundown of the alternative analysis piece, we had three different levels, and we're here at Level 3 now, but we started with Level 1, which was the universe of alternatives, and we looked at 55 different improvement concepts, narrowed those down based on the transportation needs, and published a report in November of 2023. After that, we looked at Level 2, which focused on the primary intersections in the corridor, which were those intersections that had major collectors or above as the minor road. And we looked at specific intersection improvements at each of those locations. And now we've moved into Level 3, which takes what we took from the previous levels and builds onto it by looking at the rest of the intersections and also facility types as far as the roadway sections in between all of the intersections. So the Level 3 screening process started with defining planning segments, and then we looked at improvement packages in each of the segments, evaluated those, and came up with a rating, and I'll talk through these steps here as I go along. So planning segments are essentially sections of roadway that function as a system to provide access and mobility within a geographic area. So this approach helped the study team to analyze the impacts that could happen upstream and downstream of a single intersection within the segment. And so we have 15 planning segments in the US 30 West study area, many of them in Marshall County, as you can see. And we, we basically determined these segments based on a few different reasons. We looked at where intersections function together to provide access to adjacent land, where intersections could influence adjacent intersections if improved, where continuity was important, where the traffic volumes might have changed, where the land use changed to try to determine the boundaries. And then, in each of the planning segments, we looked at improvement packages. And improvement packages are a combination of those intersection improvements and facility type, which together act as an alternative for the segment, so you can think of them just as alternatives. And there's multiple improvement packages developed for each of the planning segments. When we were developing these improvement packages, we thought about things like influence of intersection concepts on adjacent intersections. So if we had an interchange in one location, it may impact what could happen at the nearby intersections. Also looked at access management. We brought in those secondary intersections. And when it comes to the access management, there was a major consideration in the creation of the improvement packages. The graphic on this slide is an illustration of the balance between mobility and access for different facility types. So facility types that allow full access, those to the bottom right, can have lower levels of mobility because they have so much access due to the, due to the potential stop conditions and turbulence associated with those types of roads. Higher-order roadways like freeway, expressway, major arterial have a higher degree of access control to preserve greater mobility. So to better align corridor mobility in the level of access within the corridor, it is necessary to apply some level of access management improvements in conjunction with the intersection treatments. So within the study area, US 30 and 31 are currently classified as a major arterial roadway. As shown in this graphic, a major arterial typically has more, more, more mobility and less access than other facility types. Also, in some areas of the study, there are driveways with direct access to US 30 or 31, many of which currently don't meet NDOT's access management guidelines. So while these driveways are important for access, they can impact safety and operations of the roadway. So the challenge is to provide safety improvements, which sometimes reduce or eliminate access while still providing the necessary access needed across and to US 30 and 31 for the residents and businesses. So next, we evaluated the improvement packages. We looked at safety, mobility, cost, and environmental constraints. The safety performance of each improvement package was determined through a multi-step process that started with the identification of conflict points. Conflict points represent locations where vehicle paths intersect, the driveways, intersections, and interchanges. Reductions in conflict points are associated with improvements in safety, as fewer conflict points typically result in fewer locations where crashes can occur. Mobility analysis looked at travel time along US 30 and 31. We looked at access and crossing points in the sense of how much distance between each would be present in a package. We looked at changes in cross corridor mobility as it relates to the distance between crossing points and also driveway impacts. When it came to cost, we had some conceptual designs that we used for planning level estimates, and the costs were presented as a range in the report due to the, the planning level nature, conceptual nature of the study. And these costs would likely change as more detail becomes available in the future, but they do provide a useful tool of comparison for the study. As far as environmental constraints, those were also analyzed to determine the potential impacts for each of the packages within each, within each package and segment. Lastly, we also looked at the study goals, and these study goals were a result of public feedback we received early on in the study, and so they're a direct, they're a direct reflection of that. And the study goals were economic development, equity in transportation, multimodal access and connections, emerging technology, fiscal and environmental practicality, corridor character, and local access. So after we evaluated the improvement packages, we were able to apply a rating, and there were three ratings in the report. Some packages were eliminated. This meant that the package is considered unreasonable when compared to other packages due to limited benefits compared to its impacts or costs. It likely does not warrant consideration as part of any subsequent NEPA studies. Some improvement packages were carried forward. This meant, in comparison to others, the package is considered to have marginal benefits. In some cases, it may also have higher impacts and/or costs. It will continue to be considered in future studies, but requires further analysis to determine if it's a reasonable solution that meets the transportation needs. Finally, some packages are recommended. Packages that were recommended meet the purpose and need and are considered reasonable. Recommended improvement packages are considered among the best within a planning segment at addressing the identified needs, and these likely do warrant consideration as part of any subsequent NEPA studies. But I do want to let you know, at this time, no decisions have been made about the future of US 30 or US 31 in the study area, and no projects related to the PEL have been funded by NDOT. A stated goal of the PEL study process is the identification of a range of reasonable alternatives. So given the needs identified within the study area, a reasonable alternative could consist of improvements at a single intersection, a group of intersections, and/or the roadway in between them. Depending on multiple factors, including statewide priorities and funding availability, improvements considered as part of this study could be combined in different ways in the future to address the identified needs. And it's also possible that improvement packages could be mixed and matched across planning segments. This is an example of one of the segments. This is the South Plymouth Segment 715 of US 31. And all of the, we have these graphics for all of the segments, and essentially, they show all the packages that were considered. In this case, there were three packages, two expressway, one freeway, and also the no-build. And all of the segments also do consider a no-build, which would essentially mean no changes to that particular segment. In this case, they're all carried forward with Package 1 being recommended. And typically, these are aligned, then, where you would see, in this case, on the left, or it could be on the top if it's a US 30 segment. Those are the, the packages that have higher access, and then as you move down towards freeway, the access is restricted just due to that facility type. And so that's the way they're kind of organized in the report. So we do have, I do have a video here, and we have made videos of all of the packages that were recommended or carried forward, and they're on the website, propelus30.com, and we encourage everyone to take a look at those. It's a flyover, essentially, and you'll see here, I think it makes it a little easier to understand what we're showing in those figures. So it's a short, two-minute video.
The following improvement package identifies potential solutions in the US 30 West Propel corridor that address access management, safety, regional and local mobility, and connectivity. Potential improvements in the South Plymouth Planning Segment on US 31 stretch from north of 12th Road to the US 30 Interchange. This segment extends three miles, encompassing two intersections. Land use is a mix of rural residential and farmland. Large nearby developments include the Marshall County RMC. The alternatives advancing from the Level 2 screening were organized into three improvement packages for the South Plymouth Planning Segment, varying from less access control to full access control. Classified as expressway free flow, Improvement Package 2 would convert 11th Road from a stop-controlled intersection to a reduced conflict intersection. And at 9A Road, the current stop-controlled intersection would be changed to a directional left turn. With this package, safety improves as total conflict points drop from 39 to 30, a 23% reduction. Data-driven, fueled by feedback, a local approach. Read the full report at propelus30.com and make your voice heard by leaving a comment. All concepts shown in this video are preliminary and subject to change. They also do not show the total new right-of-way required. Please refer to the features contained in the draft Level 3 screening report for more information.
The other thing I wanted to mention about the facility types is, it's not in that particular segment because there was no existing driveways, but where there were existing driveways, we also looked at a facility type called Expressway Light, which essentially NDOT took previous comments we'd received, which kind of, some were, we really want to see free flow along the corridor, take out the signals. Others were, we really want our access, and sometimes those things could conflict. So Expressway Light aims to kind of meet in the middle a little bit, and it allows ride-in, ride-out, ride-in, ride-out access at driveways, and also would be free flow. So that is present in some of the segments. So some of the things we've, these are all passed now at this point, but we did have community office hours in a few areas throughout the corridor, including in Bourbon. This week it was. We also had public meetings, one in Plymouth here and one in Wantata. The report is still present at all these libraries, including here in Plymouth and other places in Marshall County. The best place to get a lot of the information is propelus30.com. That's where the virtual public meeting is. It has a recording of our presentation we gave at the public meeting, has all these videos, there's 43 of them, has the report, and it's a place you can also go to comment. So the official comment period does end tomorrow. We'll accept comments after that, but the comments received by tomorrow will be responded to and go into the final Level 3 screening report. So I know, I think the county is working with the city of Plymouth to provide a letter with comments, I believe, but we encourage all comments from, from you and your constituents. So thank you for any questions.
Questions or comments from the council? Mr. Harmon?
Have you identified a priority, a priority list of projects? Is, is there a list like that or no?
There's not at this stage. Really, even at the end of the PEL study, we're going to end up with multiple options. That's, that's the goal of the study, is to get a reasonable set of alternatives. At that point, it would be up to the NDOT districts to look at, take what we have now that, now that we have the full, they have the full corridor and they have the study for all of it, start to make decisions, and that's probably where the prioritization would occur.
Okay.
Yeah, I've gotten, it's been a pleasure to see this presentation three times. I saw the, the commissioners meeting at MACAG the other day and then here this morning. My big takeaways from, coming from our perspective, was that this is not going to be an Indianapolis-driven decision-making process, that it's going to be the, the local people here in our district that are going to make these decisions as opportunities arise, right?
That is what the plan is right now.
Yeah. And so it's going to provide options for them. They're going to make decisions based on their budget and make submissions that are going to be at least five years in advance from where we are today before any changes are going to be made. And so that basically, we still don't know, but we've, we've got the information that we need to make decisions, basically.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. We've looked at the corridor as a whole and have some options.
Good.
Whereas before, it might have been, I think he said it, the NDOT Deputy Commissioner said it at that meeting yesterday, that it'd be piecemeal, but now we have a, you know, a plan that covers the full corridor.
Very good. Any further questions or comments?
All right. Well, I will say thank you for the, the great work that you guys have done to, to get public input and to make sure that local leaders are aware of what's going on. So thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Vicki Brown with Dustin's Place, welcome.
Good evening. Some of you guys were here back in September when I was here disclosing some of our findings that we had done and worked with the JAG Institute out of Denver, Colorado, specific to mortality rates and bereavement rates here in our, our county. And at the time, I had said I was just coming to inform. Today, I am here to request. We have been given a beautiful space in the upstairs of the Life Plex. It is approximately 6,500 square feet, and with that, we will be able to serve children in person every day, in the evenings, during the daytimes, Saturday workshops. Whereas right now, we're only able to have the current space we have every other Monday night. We are not able to utilize it any more than that, and we are currently averaging 85 individuals at those Monday nights. So as you can imagine, if you've ever been in that Stockman Youth Center, which is absolutely beautiful building, we are exploding it. And so this, this gift couldn't come at a better time. We have celebrated five years in November and are excited with the growth that we have seen. But with that gift comes the need of renovations. The space currently is being utilized, one part as Ann Sellers Wrestling Room, so there's wrestling mats all over the floor, and the other part as a empty storage shell. So we will need to renovate that into, yep, those are the current, the current look of the space. So we need to renovate it into a Useful Children's Grief Center. What that includes will be 10 meeting rooms, a dining space to hold up to 100 individuals at one time, which will also serve as our educational space where we can host our own seminars and professional developments, which currently, we're having to rent space to do that. We will have 10 meeting rooms, each one set up specifically for the use that we have. So adult space, children's space, a teen room. You're looking at what could be the boardroom or another adult space through that window there, and then down the hall is where all the other meeting rooms will be. We will also have a physical expression room, which will be, it's called a volcano room in the bereavement field, but essentially, it's padded and it lets them get out their physical energy. We'll have an art expression room to do art therapy for both adults and children, and then we'll have our sensory room for those children who get overstimulated and recognizing that they need a quiet room. The lights will be low, there'll be twinkle lights in the ceiling, so that each individual will receive the grief support that they need in the form that they need it. This will only be the third, maybe the fourth, depending on when Ryan Place finishes their building, build, child-specific center in the entire state of Indiana. So we are definitely super proud to be bringing that to Marshall County and excited for what that means for our community. But with that comes a cost. The cost of the renovation of the entire 6,500 square feet is $750,000. We have worked with an agency out of Indianapolis, the statewide United Way, who brought in third-party analysis to make sure we were on the proper numbers. They've put it out to bid for up to, there was like four different agencies that bid on that, and so that came in at the best price. We currently have grants out to fund about $425,000 of that $750,000 and $752,000. So I'm coming here tonight to request funding as you guys look at your budgets, and that would be an adult room. And that's the entrance. If you've ever been in the upstairs of the Life Plex, it kind of gives us a front door, gives us a storefront. That is something we do not have right now. Also allows us to run office hours all the time, which is also something we do not have right now. So tonight's request is financial, something that I have not been directly asked of you guys before, but I'm asking for $185,000 to help towards that chunk that we are not in the grant request with right now.
Mr. Harmon?
Did you say you had raised 425 or you have committed? I didn't quite catch that.
We have grants out for that. So currently, there's a statewide renovation grant through the statewide initiative capital campaign. It's a United Way campaign that's, that's funded by the Lilly. We, that's a match grant, and so we have up to $325,000 of that, but we now need our community to say they'll match that so we can receive that grant.
So you've received a commitment for it if you received matching?
If we can get our communities backing on it.
And that was 425 or 3 something?
That's 325, and then we have a $50,000 grant out to T-Mobile for their community enhancement project and...
Has that been awarded or is that just an application?
We are waiting on it.
Okay.
Where am I at? And then an additional $20,000 is out to the, I should have pulled my notes out right when you started.
But is that, is that just a, an application or is that?
Correct. They're all applications that are out.
And the only commitment you got is the 325 if you raise?
If we can match that.
Okay. I just wanted to know the numbers. Okay, thank you.
I would, I would suggest that when we look at some of the local agreements that we participate in, say when we do Ready, we do MCDC, whatever, the, the county usually picks up about 40% of that. And so...
Can you rephrase that? Because even I couldn't hear that.
Okay. So in a lot of the agreements, when we're doing matches or when we're meeting together to meet a goal with the other units of local government, the county usually picks up about 40% of the requested amount. Have you spoken with the folks at Bremen and Plymouth and Argus and those folks, or is that on your agenda?
That is on my agenda.
Okay.
It's, it's a matter of like, I mean, when you're in the nonprofit grant world, it's finding the right order to do it. You can't get one until you get the other, but who's the one to get? And I had come to you guys back in September, felt super encouraged and know that you, as a county, served the entire population that we serve. So we start, I started here. Yes, sir?
You were talking 750,000, and if you get your grants, it's four and a quarter, okay? That puts you down to 325, and your request today is 185,000 for that request. So the balance of the 140, you're thinking you're paying that up from additional grants or pledges, or where's that coming from?
That will be from pledges, coming out to the community, asking them to support us. We received $35,000 on the night of our gala, specifically for the building. So that is already earmarked in its own funding within our organization, and so we will just, we will be going out to the community, asking for that type of support. We'll do room naming, so we'll do opportunities for organizations and businesses to name our dining hall, to name our children's art room, and, and look at a capital campaign in that capacity as well.
After this is up and running, then, the internal cost to run it, I mean, so, so the Life Plex is supplying the 6,500, that's at no fee then?
It's a dollar a year.
Okay. And then, does that include your utilities and all of that?
So that'll be an additional cost for us at $42,000 a year, which we have worked with a financial agency to look at our current budget over the last year, three years and five years, to make sure that where we are is on track and able to fund that. Currently, in our savings, we have enough to hold us for five years of utilities and such, if we were never to raise another dollar. But looking ahead, we know that based on that, we are more than fine.
And your staff cost?
Currently, we only have 1.5 staff members, and we just got a grant, along with a match for that, for $50,000 to pay staffing for the next year.
So what does that look like you're going to need for staffing? Because I'm like, you're going from every other Monday to, you're saying, morning hours, evening hours. What is your staffing looking like? Like, what is your goal to have? How many people are you looking to staff?
So the one thing with grief is, we do not believe that grief is pathological. So we are not looking to expand our staff greatly because most of our groups are ran by volunteers. What we believe with grief and what's backed through significant research is grief is something that needs to be experienced amongst peers, and it can be facilitated by anyone who has a heart for it. So currently, we have 23 volunteer facilitators facilitating all of our groups. And what we know is, by opening up daytime groups, we open up an entire population of volunteers that we currently can't touch because they're not available in the evenings. And so we anticipate our volunteers growing greatly with that. And then we will be bringing in some individual counseling and therapists, which is part of that $50,000 grant to help us grow that staffing, which we do not currently offer individual counseling. offer individual counseling. But in our, having our own space, that's one of our goals.
That was one of my questions too, I'm sorry.
I was going to ask, how long is your lease with the Life Flex?
Ten years with a unlimited renewal, but it's a ten-year hold at one dollar a year.
So it seems like your operational costs will be pretty low, it's just getting you in the door.
Correct, correct. We don't anticipate a giant impact on us financial-wise, beyond the renovations. But what we, we know is, one, a storefront is huge, and I, I mean, we're not a store, but having a place where people can actually walk into and, and you, and see me, meet with me, come in and, and donors can come in and see, that research shows that that greatly increases donations as well. But we also know that we aren't reaching everyone because we can't hold groups as much as we're needed to hold them. We've got people that come every other week, but we've got some families that, that they just want to come to our workshop or a quarterly Saturday meeting or something like that, and we can't offer that right now.
So your volunteers, I'm sorry, so your volunteers, are, they're offered training on how to handle these children?
Correct.
Because some of us could be lost in any given situation, you know?
Correct. We offer, we do a two-day training with all of our volunteers, and so they go through two days of grief-informed care and facilitation skills, and then continued training throughout. They're all CPR certified, all of first aid certified. One of our goals with this is to also bring in, there's a couple other groups that we currently aren't offering. There's one, Alternatives to Suicide is what it's called, and that is for those with suicidal ideations. And so that in and of itself is a separate training that we would be offering those facilitators. Two of our volunteers just went down and got trained in it last month down in Indianapolis. So just, there's lots of training that go in, goes into it, but at the same time, it's the heart. They're really just holding space. They're learning how to be comfortable in the uncomfortable, because again, we don't believe that grief is pathological. We're not here to fix these children. They don't have anything wrong with them. We're just allowing them space to express it with what no one else does.
One other question, I'll be quiet.
No, you can.
Okay. As you know, when it comes to new construction...
Yes.
When I built my house, I had anticipated all of these costs, and I really underestimated about twenty percent of where I really needed to be. And that's not really uncommon. So I, I would caution you that when you do your cost to figure in a certain percentage over that, because the dream and the reality are totally different, and the percentages normally are too. So you just want to allow yourself some space in there. And I think it's a great program that you're about to embark on.
Thank you, and I will, full transparency, I came out with this at five-hundred thousand. I thought, five-hundred thousand dollars, we're going to get this done, when we sent it out to our project manager. So we are working with a company, Ancon Construction has taken this on free of charge. They've done all of our architecture and our project manager, and he said, and then he came back at seven-fifty-two, seven-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars. So, so yes, I also was probably about twenty percent off in my initial judgment, but this is through Ancon, not through my lack of expertise.
Thanks.
Yes.
So one, one further question on the numbers. So the three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand that you need to match, does that need to be local government match, or can that be a match from any source?
Any source.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I view this as being, if, if you rank the priorities of things that we look at from one to ten, I would say this is an eight or a nine.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. So my recommendation or my, my idea is an initial commitment of seventy-five thousand dollars, and then depending on what she's able to do going forward, up to an additional fifty-five thousand dollars for a total of a hundred-and-thirty thousand. That would be my, that's where I'm at on it.
What, Angie, what's in the general fund right now, please?
I...
I'm sorry, because I couldn't, I couldn't get into the SBS portal, I was having issues.
I don't have that number off the top of my head. It was right around seven million that was in there.
I think that's about right.
Yeah, seven-point-two, and that is before our draw.
And that's about three-point-three, what do you think that draw is?
Don't know yet, we're still waiting on the state to give us back our numbers. We've submitted everything to the state, we're waiting on approval before we start with the Form 22s.
It's a deadline.
So right now, we're right about seven million in the general fund.
Okay. But what's, what's your, what's your numbers?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Okay.
What is your deadline? What is your deadline? What do you have to have your funding secured by?
There is not a deadline necessarily, it's just the longer it takes to raise, the longer before we can break ground. I mean, I suppose by the end of two thousand twenty-five would be when the grant match is no longer eligible.
Okay.
But that's not my personal deadline.
Yeah. So do, do you need an actual, like pledge or an actual check before then?
An actual pledge.
Yeah, so I, I was suggesting, let's, let's pledge seventy-five thousand tonight, let her go visit other places and let them know that the county is willing to put up forty percent, up to a hundred-and-thirty thousand, and let them see if they're willing to step up and, and match us on, on what their regular portion would be. That's my suggestion.
I got a quick question here. Because back in September, you said you poll in regionally, got a lot of people from outside the county. Is there any idea if Stark County, Fulton, St. Joe, any of those counties would be willing to chip in on this for you?
My initial response with St. Joe specifically is, the building's located in Marshall County, they cannot fund the building project. But they're the ones that gave us the twenty-five-thousand-dollar salary, because they can pay for us to come and do the work, but they can't invest in a building that's not in their county. And that was how they kind of looked at it, was they will continue to pay for us to do the work, but they can't invest in a building that's not in their county.
And does any of this technically fall in the mental health realm?
All of it. So that was my, children's grief is the most prevalent adverse childhood experience that we have, with, it affecting one in every ten children, one in every seven if we talk about the black children. And what we know about childhood bereavement is unsupported childhood bereavement turns into incarcerated adults, turns into drug use because they're, they never learned proper coping skills as children during the time that they were going through it. So all of this falls into mental health and the mental health of our children.
Predict and prevent versus react and repair.
So Mr. Falsted, we, we would have the option, if we made a pledge tonight before we actually did an additional appropriation, the opportunity would be available to consult with the auditor's office and Dalton about if we can use a restricted fund versus using general fund money, so we can definitely make sure we spend it from the right pot, so...
Because there's that realm of, since the state's mental health is, thing's kind of a priority right now, we could get reimbursed. There's some things talked about lately that, from down there.
Absolutely. I'm actually going down as one of the panelists at the Respect Conference that IU Medical is putting on, and there's another one in, in the end of February, because what they're recognizing is children's bereavement is such a huge thing, and so they're pulling us bereavement professionals down into these other medical fields to educate doctors even, how to, how do you help these children, support them?
Yeah. Yeah, the, the state's commitment to things like this, depending on what kind of stipulations they put on it, the, the state's looking at committing hundreds of millions of dollars in this direction, so, yeah.
Have you approached the towns and the city of Plymouth with this idea to see if any pledges may come forward from those folks, because it's going to be a mutual benefit for the entire county?
Correct. I have not. I went out in September, just like I did here in September, to let them know I was coming, but I felt like I needed to come to the county level first, and now I will go out into the towns and tell them the county is supporting us, but we also need that each town to back us and to get behind us as well. So I will be going into the towns.
That's what I would do.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions?
I think you had a good idea.
Okay.
Do you have a, did you make a motion?
I, I made a suggestion, if somebody would like to make that motion, those two numbers are seventy-five and one-thirty.
I will gladly make that motion.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion by Mr. Patterson and a second by Mr. Masterson to pledge seventy-five thousand dollars with an option to come back for an additional fifty-five thousand, depending on how the rest of your fundraising shakes out.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any discussion?
Not really about the motion, so, but I do want to ask, say something, you could, do you have plans to, to go to the schools and ask them for anything or no? Because that could be, I mean...
I know. Unfortunately, the schools, we already go into the schools, we serve a hundred-and-twenty-five students every single week in the school buildings in grief support, throughout Marshall and St. Joe County, at no cost to the schools, because getting money from them is very difficult.
Yeah, they don't have the kind of flexibility that we have.
Yeah.
They really don't.
I do have someone working at Culver Community who has mentioned wanting to help look for some grants to cover some mental health. But it's hard at schools to get funding. So right now, we serve a hundred-and-twenty-five students every week at no cost to the schools.
Okay.
Have you, have you talked to Sandy Dumphy at the Health Department?
I have. She was on my list in September. She'll also be on my list in the next couple of weeks, because the other thing that we know...
Because you're pillars.
Yes, well, and what we know is with the opioid, opioid money, is postvention is prevention with, when we talk about children's grief.
Right.
And so this postvention work that we're doing with children is preventing further substance use and substances from coming into our community. So Sandy has been and will be on my list.
I'm just thinking frequently. I'll have a pillar.
I also would go to the chamber and get the list of all the chamber members and all the major corporations and small businesses, and send something out there to see if some of us would like to pledge individually.
I would love that.
As businesses, you might be surprised.
Yep, all right. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, the question is on the motion. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the motion's agreed to.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate your support.
All right, council items. We have the consent agenda, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. Copies of the consent agenda, including additional appropriations and transfers of appropriations, are located on the back table for your inspection. Are there any members that would like to remove an individual item from the consent agenda for consideration?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harman.
I think we can reduce a number here, having spoken with some staff, and the medical self-benefits can be reduced from a million to a half a million, and that is an appropriation, authorization. It's not coming out of general fund.
All right. Would you like to make that as a motion?
So my motion would be to reduce the amount requested from a million to a half a million on the medical self-insurance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the additional appropriation is reduced. Are there any members that would like to remove any additional items for individual consideration? All right, just as a, as a highlight on this, we've got a total of a hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars roughly for the owner-occupied housing project, and we will be appropriating the full balance of our remaining ARBA dollars, if I remember right, just over five-hundred-thousand dollars. So that will finally be completed just in the nick of time, so... All right. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Patterson and a second by Mrs. Cox to approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the consent agenda is approved. We have the minutes from our November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mrs. Johnson, a second by Mr. Patterson to approve the, the minutes as presented. Is there discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, the minutes are approved, six-zero-one, with Mrs. Cox abstaining. I have an invoice from Senator Dalton.
Remiss.
In the amount of six-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety dollars. And then I will need your approval to submit it for payment.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion by Mr. Falsted and a second by Mr. Patterson to approve the Levin Law invoice. Is there discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the invoice is approved. We do not have a bill this month from Senator Dalton. And we've got Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twelve, transfer to the Employee Benefits Rainy Day Fund. And we did have some basic discussion of this last month. Looks like we're going to be transferring six-hundred thousand dollars into the Employee Benefits Rainy Day Fund. Is there a motion on the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Masterson and a second by Mrs. Cox to approve the resolution as presented. Is there discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the resolution is approved. I have Ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash ten, parenthetical eight, amending the two thousand twenty-four salary ordinance. And it looks like we're doing a stipend for the clerk and a stipend for the auditor as authorized by state law. Is there a motion on the ordinance?
I will make that motion.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mrs. Johnson, a second by Mr. Falsted to approve the ordinance. Is there discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the ordinance is approved. I've got Ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-six, amending the two thousand twenty-five salary ordinance, and that would be the auditor stipend biweekly.
The same stipend, only it's being paid out biweekly, or is this additional?
It's the same stipend. The clerk only is eligible every federal election.
That's right.
The auditor is eligible every year, as long as the extra duties are there.
Yeah, okay.
And we thank you profusely for all of the extra duties that you've been doing for us, so, yeah.
I did that a bit over the last few weeks, so, thank you.
Motion to approve.
I will second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Masterson and a second by Mrs. Cox to approve the ordinance as presented. Is there discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the ordinance is approved. Before we move on to public comment, I've been told we need to do some, some bookkeeping cleanup stuff, making sure that Mr. Levin's memo of understanding or contract that he has with the council allows him to seek outside resources when necessary. And we did authorize him to do that in a very broad sort of way pertaining to our lawsuit that we had filed recently. I'd like to have him authorized in a very specific sort of way so that we make sure we get all our ducks in the row for State Board of Accounts, so just for, for the record, Mr. Levin, which, which two outside sources were you looking for us to approve?
It's Michael Roush with Leon Zalis, and then Lauren White did the original memo, but she was with a firm, I don't remember the name of her firm.
Hepler and Broom.
There you go. So it'll be Leon Zalis and Hepler and Broom.
Okay. Yeah, so could I get a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Patterson and a second by Mr. Falsted to specifically empower the attorney to use those outside sources, is there discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the motion is agreed to. Let's see. And Marcel, would you want to give us an update real briefly on what we've got going on with, with the lawsuit currently?
Sure. Invenerge's filed a motion to dismiss, claiming that the county cannot sue itself. So that's where we're at right now. The deadline to file a response to that is the thirtieth. We'll seek a motion for extension of time to respond due to the holidays, and then when the new commissioners... Um, and then when the new commissioners, um, come on board, I'm sure we'll have a conversation about how we go forward.
Yeah, so it, it looks like at this point we will not see any resolution of the lawsuit before we have a change in leadership.
Well, there certainly won't be, even if we were, even if our motion for extension of time was denied, which I don't think it would because of the holidays, but, um, the judge could do whatever he wants. Uh, it was, it would be very unlikely there would be a hearing set, um, in between December 30th and, and the new year.
Okay, very good. Any questions from the council on, on the lawsuit? All right, at this point, uh, we'll take, uh, any comments from the public on any matter whatsoever. Jamie?
I'm taking my media hat off.
Okay.
I have to do that.
Feel, feel free, if you'd, uh, state your, uh, name and address for the record, then.
Yes, um, Jamie Clery. I live, uh, at 509 South Bourbon Street in Bourbon. And I'm asking you if Vicki Brown has to come back and ask you for more money, please give it to her. And I'm asking anybody in this county who can hear this recording to give her the money she's asking for. These kids are in a lot of pain. There's no real resource for kids who are facing suicidal ideation. She is in the trenches of a very vulnerable, underserved population. Am I, sorry.
You're good.
We're gonna move the microphone closer. And you guys are standing in the gap with the financial ability to strengthen her, um, as she serves these kids. As you know, it, it's, it's no secret that this community has been rattled with, um, children who have suffered death by suicide.
Yeah.
Help is needed. Every second counts, and every, every dime makes a difference. So please, um, time is of the essence. If she comes back, please give her what she asked for. And like I said, anybody else who's listening to this as she comes to, please, this is just me as a human.
Yep.
Not media.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the, of the public wish to comment on, uh, any item whatsoever? Sandy. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Sandy Dunphy, Administrator at the Marshall County Health Department. This is just a very informal, um, presentation of just some numbers I thought you might be interested in hearing. Sometimes, I know prior to working in public health, I really didn't know what went on at the Health Department, other than I took my kids there to get immunizations for a while when they were little. And that's about it. That's about all I knew they did. So I just wanted to, for, for this year, these are, are numbers. On our environmental side, we've issued 105 septic permits, 92 well permits, over 400 food permits. We have investigated 88 animal bites, one being a spider monkey, two mole bites.
A mole?
You can't make this up, it's great. Uh, we have had 22 complaints, um, that were, we call recordable, meaning we had to follow up, um, do investigations, complaints like, oh, my neighbor's burning asbestos. I mean, that's, you know, recordable complaints, similar like that. We gave, um, almost 3,900 immunizations from, um, infants up through adults. Of those immunizations, we have over 1,500 patients registered in our database as patients that get immunizations. We offered 40 vaccine clinics off-site, either at schools or with our mobile unit. Um, we even have an Amish family that we go into their home, and then their surrounding Amish community comes there, and we do vaccines and hearing screens and vision screenings and lead screenings, and we weigh the babies, and they feed us, and it's wonderful. Um, we did 15 off-site hearing clinics where we go either, um, into, um, private schools or, um, children that are homeschooled. We did 15 hearing and 15 vision screenings. Um, we have done 44 lead screenings this year and nine lead assessments, which means that the children's lead level was higher than recommended, so we had to go into the home and do a full assessment to figure out if we could find where the source of the lead contamination was coming from, and then work with the families on proper nutrition and then abatement. Sometimes it was, um, getting the resources so that they could, you know, repaint or some flooring, some tile needed to come up, whatever we needed to get the lead out of the homes. We, uh, tested 220 people for TB, for tuberculosis screening. We've had one active case of tuberculosis this year, which required, um, a four-week in-home quarantine until we could get the levels down. We have tested 59 individuals for sexually transmitted disease for free and treatment for free. We have done 578 communicable disease investigations, um, just, that's just Marshall County. Those can be hepatitis C or pertussis or, um, syphilis or chickenpox, histoplasmosis, lead, it's a lot of things. Um, we had 129 births in the county this year, so we issued birth certificates, which is down because of our hospital not being a birthing hospital here in Plymouth. We issued 370 death certificates. Um, and then just some random things that we did this year. Um, we ordered eight Narcan naloxone boxes to distribute through our community, and we got those in just this week, but they are going to go out Culver, Bremen, Bourbon. I mean, everybody was just excited. But with the one Narcan box that we have that's attached to our building, we gave out 300 doses since April.
Wow.
Um, we've given out over 2,400 condoms as part of our harm reduction in the community. Those numbers peak during Drivers Ed in the summer, just throwing that out there. They have Drivers Ed in our building.
Imagine that.
Yeah, I know.
16 years.
Uh-huh. Um, we've given out over, uh, 350 harm reduction kits to families. We just have a little bucket outside of our office so that they can come even when we're not there. We have collected almost 9,000 sharps, so that kept the sharps out of our parks, out of our streets, um, out of people's homes. And a lot of those sharps are, you know, are diabetic folks or people taking, you know, a, um, like a biologic like Humira. And when we partnered with the South Bend Medical Foundation with the mobile blood drive, we've collected, we've had seven blood drives this year and collected 92 units.
Wow.
So we're excited. So those are just some of the things we, um, a lot of these things were able to do because of our Health First Indiana funding, so we hope to expand on these next year. But I just thought, I, I've never heard anybody come and tell you kind of what the Health Department does, so I thought, I'm gonna be the first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question for you.
Yeah, sure.
Do you have any insight on about the hospital and when we would actually get full services back to Marshall County? Cause when I see 129 births and 370 deaths?
Yeah. Those numbers used to be about equal.
That's kind of what I thought.
Yeah.
Well, most, I think most of them are out of county births now. And then you live here, I mean, I had my kids in Goshen.
Yeah.
So.
But I mean, do you hear anything, I mean, as far as any of those other services opening up?
I've not heard any plans of bringing, opening the birthing unit back up.
Or the intensive care?
Correct.
Yeah.
Sad.
Mm-hmm. We hope to address some of that in the new year.
I hope so. Good job, Sandy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sandy.
All right, any other members of the public wish to address the council? All right, anything from members of the council? Mr. Harmon?
Yes, I've been, uh, in contact with Mr. Grohlak about the fire EMS funding. Um, I wanted to get this sewn up. I, I think obviously by next January, we need to probably get some finalization on, on language, protocols, et cetera, et cetera. Steve Dalton had given me some recommendations. I just emailed you guys, uh, right at the start of the meeting. Uh, Angie, I emailed you his recommendation as well. I'll just read them to you real quick. Um, the numbers would have to change because he was unaware of what we appropriated through the ARPA, but he suggests transferring 500,000, but that balance will have to go down to about 325, since we already, um, awarded a portion of that. Transfer that amount of money from the general to a newly created fire protection grant fund. Uh, appropriate those dollars to each of the eight departments, um, and then, um, another 100,000 for, um, various, uh, use for, uh, as needed or as requested. Um, and then pass a resolution which grants the commissioners the ability to use the dollars for these eight departments to fund the equipment grant. So that's what he's recommending, so maybe the first of the year we get together, have a work session, but or something like that, we, we hammer out all the, all the protocols and, and the guidance on that. But initially, Mr. Chairman, we, uh, committed 500,000, uh, 80% of that went to eight departments, so I would suggest 10% goes to each department, and there's a 20% set aside for, um, special uses. So that's something I want to bring, uh, forward next January. Okay?
Is there any action that we could take, uh, today to expedite that at all, or, uh, would we need to do that? Or could, could we set those things up behind the scenes next year?
I mean, I suppose we could commit in spirit to get it done. I mean, we would need a grant fund, though, to probably do something concrete, and we'd need an appropriation, uh, a transfer of some sort for it to be concrete. But I just want the, you know, the firefighters to be assured that our commitment stands, and so I thought, I said I'd bring something tonight, uh, to lay that out, so, I mean, do you want to make a motion, or should we make a motion to, to support this?
Couldn't hurt.
Okay. All right. Uh, I'll make a motion to, um, establish in the future a firefighting EMS grant fund to be administered by the commissioners with future guidance, uh, to follow. That's my motion.
All right.
I'll second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Harmon and a second by Mrs. Cox. Is there further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the motion's agreed to. All right. Anything else from the council? Mr. Masterson?
I think we'd be very remiss if we didn't thank Jesse and Adam for their service on the board, the many hours you put in, and, um, the things that we've accomplished, and we wish you the very best in the next step, which happens after the first of the year. And I think we are very fortunate to have capable people stepping up to the plate with Brandon and Steve coming aboard, and we'd like to welcome them, but.
Indeed.
Thank you all very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Well, I'm gonna take this opportunity because unless, uh, unless something weird happens in the next couple of weeks, this will be my last, uh, my last meeting behind this gavel here, so, um, I want to thank you all. This has been the honor of my life to, to serve as your president for the last two years. And I, uh, I want to commit, um, as a commissioner to, uh, um, helping to have a, uh, new spirit of collaboration between the council and the commissioners. Um, I will, uh, press for, um, regular work sessions where we can get together and talk about issues that matter to the county, and, um, that, uh, we will not put you in a position where we make commitments of money and put you guys in a spot where you have to say yes without having an opportunity first to consider where those monies come out of the budget. I especially want to thank Mrs. Johnson, who, uh, took on a Herculean task this year. My experience so far in government has been that, uh, we can never anticipate the challenges that we're going to face. And when we appointed you to the, uh, planning commission, um, none of us realized what we were asking you to do, and, um, you performed admirably, and, um, from the results that we saw earlier this week, um, I believe the, the county owes you and, uh...
Several constituents.
Yeah, many members of the public who fought so hard, and, uh, the, uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals who, who did their job, and, uh, yeah, I would say you were all heroes to me because you, you saved the county, so, um, I'd like to invite everybody to our, uh, swearing-in ceremony on, uh, December 30th over in, uh, Superior, or Circuit Court at 11 o'clock. And, uh, yeah, it's been an honor.
What time is that?
11 a.m. on the 30th, yep. So, anything else for the good of the order? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Masterson, a second by Mrs. Cox for adjournment. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.
I might not be around because we're Christmas break. We're going down to...